...colleague Brad Archibald, and as it was stated, we are from Pioneer Technical Services, which is a local engineering firm in Butte and the surrounding areas. There's other cities that we're located in. Well, we're here to talk to you today.
Excuse me, I interrupted. You introduced Brad, but I didn't give your name.
I apologize. My name's John Morgan with Brad Archibald with Pioneer Technical Services. Tonight's presentation is to talk about the Haver revitalization district. And I have a few slides to go through. I'm going to go into detail a little bit, but at the end of it, if there's questions, obviously, we will take those as well. So if you can go to the next slide, we have a presentation overview. And this is just what we're going to be talking about, trying to give you that high level of where we're at, where we've been, and what to expect if the city council decides to move forward with this, with this plan. The slide that, you know, you're probably wondering is why are we here? And that's the next slide that's here, and how did we get here? If you could go to the next slide, just to move it forward. Brad noticed that there was a request for proposals for an engineering firm or a firm to come in and assist the city of Haver with creating a U R D district. Brad has had extensive experience with creating these with Janet Cornish, with the Community Development Services. I have had experience working with Brad on multiple projects, as well as being a city commissioner in Butte. I've been on the other side of it as well. I'm actually on the TED Board now, which is established to give recommendations to the city council on that side. And so we have an in-depth knowledge of going through and creating these. All of these districts that we've created are similar, but they're all different, right? Because the local municipalities that we're working in have different needs and wants. And so we always have to make sure that we're adapting to that municipality to make sure that we're achieving their goal. Bear paw with the conjunction of the city of Haver solicited proposals. We submitted a proposal on that, and luckily, we were the winner of that proposal. And so after meeting with people, Urban Renewal District was decided that that would be the best path forward, and then we were going to introduce the TIF financing side of it. Now, with the U R D, we come up with a U R D plan as before you all tonight. That kind of goes through and establishes what the plan would be and what the goals of that plan would be. But the main component of it is to try to figure out how to finance it, right? Money is what drives everything, and so there's got to be a way to go through it and finance that. Now, as we go through and we talk about this proposal, we're going to be showing a lot of acronyms at you. U R D, Urban Renewal District. We have a U R A, which is Urban Renewal Area. You've probably heard of them as well. And then you have a TIF, which is the Tax Increment Financing side of things. And that's basically how you get your projects paid for once the district is established. All right? As you go to the next slide, the Urban Renewal and Tax Increment Financing, these are some bullets just that I wanted to put in so that you were kind of aware of what these things do. The plan for a U R D may include a provision to use a Tax Increment Financing District. Without the Tax Increment Financing District, there's really no special mechanism to fund any of your projects. And so this is, you know, stated at the M C A level that you can go through and use this kind of funding. It is state authorized, locally driven funding mechanism that allows cities and counties to direct property taxes that accrue from new development and for the U R D community. Now, on the next slide, we're not ready to go there yet. I have a graph to explain kind of where this money comes from and what you can expect, you know, in future years of how it would go through and finance some of this. Keep in mind that anytime TIF is used, that funding mechanism, anything that is collected from that TIF, has to be utilized within that district. So you can go through and have the TIF established, get tax dollars, and then use it for something that's outside of the district. And so we'll cover the district here in a little bit. I know there's some questions on how we got to that district map, which we'll cover and hopefully answer some of those questions that we have. Biggest thing with TIF is it's not a special taxing district. It doesn't create a new tax. It doesn't, you know, change your property tax, so you pay above and beyond what that established tax is. Basically, what it does is it increases the property taxes and how they're distributed to each taxing jurisdiction. And so when we go to the next slide, I'll write this down a little bit. But, you know, you have a base year, and then anything from that base year up is going to be the increment that is allowed to be reinvested into that district. Projects and programs that are funded by TIF dollars must serve a public purpose. Infrastructure, lighting, facade enhancements, that kind of stuff is what the district would go through and finance. And keep in mind that this is, you know, at your discretion as a local body to decide if this is something that you want to do. The money that we are going to be utilizing in this district, you know, it'll go through and establish a committee to go through and oversee it, and then come back to you for approval. So you guys are still in charge of everything that is being done in this district. As you go into the next slide, Trevor, this is a graph that is in kind of in a simple form of how we use TIF. I know it's pretty small to see. You'll see the down arrow just right after the red box. It says TIF start date. On the current plan that we're on right now, if this was adopted by you at the, by, on the December 1st meeting, 2025 will be considered your base year. And so all the properties that are sitting there right now, that would be locked in as the base year, you know, going forward. And then as we move into that next year, 2026, you still have the base that still is the tax value that's distributed to other taxing jurisdictions, just like it is today. And then we would go up to the kind of the green area, which is the increment for development. That would be the section that would be reinvested into that district if it was a project approved by you. On the other side, on a bluer part, you'll have mill rates not included in the increment. That looks bigger than it actually is. That's going to be your university mills. But in order for you guys to see it on my PowerPoint, I had to make that section bigger. But if you really put the pencil to it, that section is pretty small. One question that I get quite a bit after that TIF start date is what do you expect the first year to bring? And that's really a question that's difficult to answer because, quite frankly, you really don't know until you see what the district does or the city does, or legislature, or something along those lines of what that first few years is going to be. I've seen it, I've heard it. You know, other U R D districts have started in a negative because they might have a base year, and then the next year comes around and for whatever reason, values go down a little bit. So there's no increment to be utilized. If there is a negative, it's my understanding that if, you know, say you, if the base year's a thousand and it goes down to eight hundred, you're going to have that two hundred dollars, you know, in the negative. On year two, you don't have to recoup that two hundred to start your baseline again, right? So you're not going in arrears like you're going to owe any money. It still goes off your baseline for the next year. So it might take a few years to get it going, hopefully. If everything's going well and the projects are doing what they're supposed to be doing, hopefully, you have some investment into that as, you know, very, very fast. That increment for development goes for fifteen years, and then at that time, if this body decides to sell bonds, it could be extended up to thirty years. And then once that is done, that tax value for distribution, now the whole group of monies collected will go to, back to the city for that increment. So they start collecting it. And so if you, if you think about it, you have a base year that's established, you receive all of that funding as the increment grows and gets reinvested into it. And then at the sunsetting of the district, then that now all becomes back to the city in its full unburdened rate, if you will. And so you would go back to the general tax rolls at that time. And that's the intent of it, is to try to get that to be higher than when the U R D district started. Okay?
That's a good question. So within the Tax Increment Finance pool, are those funds still available after that period within that district? Or do they get absorbed into the city funds for use through other programs?
I'd look back at Brad, but go ahead.
Thank you, council member, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At the sunset of the district, the money, as long as it is obligated and programmed, it can be spent on those special projects. For U R Ds, it is not uncommon to take any remaining funds and put them into a revolving loan fund that can live after the sunset of the district. If you choose not to do that, any leftover funds are distributed to the taxing entities. So if you had some money left over, you didn't want to do, you didn't have projects to obligate it to, and you did not want to do a revolving loan fund or something like that, then you would distribute it to the taxing entities, the county, the schools, and the city, and any other districts you have. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
As you can see, I understand it as well as anybody. These are complicated projects, and sometimes it takes more than one to try to go through and figure out what the rules are on these. And so that's why it is good teamwork. So then as we go from that TIF side, if we go to the next slide, we have the allowable uses for TIF funds. Again, this isn't all of them, but it's a pretty good snapshot of what you could expect in order to use these TIF funds for. For instance, you could stabilize and/or renovate historic buildings. One thing that comes up a lot when you start having discussions, you know, with commissioners or city council, you have a historic district or you have historic buildings, and some people feel that if you introduce a U R D to it, it is going to be detrimental to those. And I would say that is far from the truth, because it would actually help the property owners maybe bring those buildings back to life in the sense, if they have a project that they would like to take that historic building, but they just don't quite have the funds to maybe do it, or they just need a little assistance, this would be an opportunity for them to apply for some funding to try to get it back to its useful life. Construct and connect public infrastructure. Sometimes, you know, when you're working with cities, there's just that one property that maybe can't have city sewer or city water. It might just not be financially accepted to go through and do it. This might be an opportunity that you could help that property owner to extend that water main, extend that sewer, that type of stuff, so that you could get that project up and running. Remove unsafe decay. You know, if there's something that's unsafe and the property is wanting to do it, they would be able to apply for assistance to go through and do this. By no means by the use of TIF funds means that you're going to take anybody's property rights away from them. They still own the property. They still have a say on what they're going to do with their property. You would just be there to allow them for, to give them some funds to hopefully get that project, you know, kickstarted if that's what they were looking for. Improve streetscapes and greens, and green spaces. Obviously, you want to create that thriving downtown area that we all love and treasure. And so if you can improve maybe sidewalks or curb appeal, if you will, by utilizing TIF funds, that would be an opportunity for you to do it. Improve accessibility. You know, as your population is out there, you want to make sure that people have the same ability to get to these properties as easy as anybody else can. I've seen it used for like A V A compliant curb cutouts, that type of stuff, so that you can get more people to use that public infrastructure. And then you can also study, plan, and promote. If there's something that you want to see what the effects of that would be within that district, you know, maybe the board might decide to do a plan to see what the opportunities would be for, you know, putting in a certain project within that district.
I have a question real quick. If somebody was going to do something like that, what percentage, is there a percentage limit there that you're talking about for them to do what you're talking about?
Percentage, like how much they could request for funding?
Yeah.
I believe that would be up to the board to decide how much money they would want to give that individual for it. One of the caveats that I know of on it is with TIF funds, the project can't have already been started before they apply for the funding of it. And so, you know, a lot of people will get ninety percent of the project complete, and they want to kind of be backpaid on it. But in all the instances, they have to start the project after they receive the okay to go through and do it. But it really would go before a board, and they would be able to decide how much they would want to grant them in either a form of a grant or a loan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brad Archibald again from Pioneer. John's exactly right with what he said, but I just wanted to clarify a little bit about the percentage. In your plan as drafted, there is not a requirement for a minimum or maximum percentage. It would be whatever this body, the city council, decides at the end, as recommended by the board. So it really is up to you. There are criteria. There are goals in the plan. You would evaluate against how the proposed project, I would imagine you would evaluate against how that proposed project would meet those goals. There are suggested criteria for evaluating projects, and then you would come up, your board would come up with a recommendation. You, as a council, would decide if you want to fund a portion of it, all of it, or none of it, whatever you decide.
Yeah. At the end of the day, the city council is still in control of these funds. You do have a board that's kind of in advisory role. They could come back to you and ask for certain funding. You guys can agree with them. You could deny it. It's up to you, to you all that decide what is best for the community. That brings me to the next slide, which is the goals of the district. It's intended to create more robust neighborhood, featuring mixed uses and thriving commercial centers through investment in public infrastructure, retention and recruitment of commerce, and leveraging limited resources. I know one of the questions that's come up is how general these goals are. And really, this is a, the plan is a guiding document, and so you really want to develop a plan that is able to be kind of utilized in multiple fronts, so that you're not just defining exactly what it should be. Because as you all know, somebody has a different idea of what they want to do. And so if you really define what the plan can do, you might be tying your hands on something like this. And so if you leave the goals pretty open, it allows the committee to take everything under advisement and decide what is best for that, for that district. The other thing that I would touch base on is on the leveraging of limited resources. I know it's come up that, you know, that first year, you might not have more than a couple thousand bucks, or you might have ten thousand bucks. Really, what good is that going to do for you as a municipality? But one of the cool things with it is you might really leverage that two thousand bucks or ten thousand dollars to go off for grant applications and using it as matching funds to get even more money so that you can bring it back to invest it in that area. And I think that's key, is that, you know, you have quite a few years to build those, and in between that, you have resources to maybe multiply that and really leverage that cash, you know, moving forward on some projects. Moving on to the next slide, just so you guys all know kind of the steps that we've taken. I know this is pretty small for everybody, and I did submit this to Bear Paw, and I believe, Trevor, you got this presentation, if anybody needs a copy of it, to go through and look at it. I just wanted to show a breakdown of kind of what we've done and where we're at and what brought us to today. It looks like on March, the beginning of March, we went through and we executed the contract with Bear Paw to really start this project. And part of that was, you know, going through and scheduling what we call the kickoff meeting. Brad Archibald and myself came up here with Janet Cornish, which she probably doesn't like me saying this, but she's the godmother of TIF districts. She's, you know, if you look back in history, you know, these, these TIF districts that have been created, Janet at some point had her hands in them because she just understands the process so well. And we still use her as a resource when we go through and create these. We did meet with the Haver Public Schools, county officials, Haver Fire Department, the mayor, public works director, and a few council members. One of the things that we like to do is, we like to communicate this at the very beginning so it's not just hit at you at, you know, one certain time of right before you have to vote. So what we want to do is we want to get as many stakeholders as we can, you know, understanding that we're looking at this, we're going to start developing the plan, and try to get as much input from them that we can. And that's what we did during that kickoff meeting. The next step, which was a, oh, go back to that, was the documentation of blight. There was a resolution that you guys all adopted. It was Resolution 3927. The difficult thing with part of the M C A on this is you have to go through and do a determination of blight. And basically, you're trying to document things that contribute to blight. And the blight word is a tough one to use, because whatever you say it, people might take that negative connotation of what that word means. But by the statute, we have to go through and just show what that could be. It could be something very simple as the sidewalk is crumbling, and that's something that contributes to the blight in that area. And so you go through and you make sure that the district has that, and you're not just trying to create a district, to create the district to reinvest into that certain area. There has to be reasons for us to do it. Then the next step we had to go through, we had to notify the Department of Revenue of the intent, which was done in July. And then, once we have that, we start drafting the plan and moving forward. There was a planning board review and recommendation, which was held in September. I believe there was a resolution that was forwarded to you all. And then there was also a public hearing on October 6th to kind of go through and talk about that and what the planning board was looking at. There was multiple public notices of public hearings. There was public hearing number one, number two, number three, four, five, and six, based upon all of this. And so that is what is bringing us tonight. This is a public hearing on the, on the plan and to talk about really the intricacies of what this project is going to involve. And then there would be, if the first reading is tonight, if you all decide to move forward with it, then there would be the second reading, that first day of December, for the second and final reading. And then if that is adopted by, by the city council, then what would happen is after that resolution goes into effect, we Pioneer would go through and send all the documentation to the Department of Revenue so they can start, you know, knowing what that district is going to look like. All of the things that we've talked about on the steps taken will be rolled up into that packet and sent off. We have to show that we did the proof of publications. We did meet with the taxing jurisdictions. Property owners had to be notified via the letter that Bear Paw did send out. And so we'll put all that together and send that to the Department of Revenue. So that's kind of the schedule of events that we've gone through so far. Moving on.
That is due to the Department of Revenue by February 1st.
Yes.
That is our deadline for pulling it all together. It's like attributed that date.
Great. The next slide, which I know there's been some questions on how the U R D boundary was created. If you would recall, you guys do have the downtown Haver master plan. This, this map or this section is actually in that plan, and this was truly our starting point. As we started to develop this plan, you know, prior to my kickoff meeting, we thought this is going to be the district that's established, you know, moving forward. As we start meeting with city officials, and they understand their community much better than Brad or I do, they know the potential growth that could be within that city if the right tool was going to be utilized. And so we changed the district to add in a different corridor or some additional corridor into this district. This is something that, you know, is, can be added to, and then once we start moving forward in the process, we can't continue to add to the district. So it's better to include as much of it that we can, because we can't keep adding to it throughout this process. The other question that I've been involved with, dealing with other municipalities, is they say, well, let's just make the whole city a U R D district. And yeah, that sounds great, right? Makes sense. That's just something you can't do, because the city still has to function with the tax incur, the taxes that they collect to keep everything rolling in between. Because remember, they don't receive that increment, you know, to keep everything else running. So that's why your district is there. I believe with some calculations that were done today, this district encompasses about three percent of the city of Haver, based on the city limits of Haver. So it looks big on these maps in a sense, because I have it shrunk down so small, but it's about three percent of your guys' city. So.
This is, this is correct.
This is the original, I would, yeah, this is the one that we started with. Now, as we go to the next side, as you can see, this is the finalized U R D boundary.
And this is the one that's three percent. This boundary represents about three percent, both as far as acreage of the city and number of parcels.
Yeah.
Either way, you bet.
So as you can see, we've kind of gone over to the right-hand side on this map, and then we've gone down a few, down on the other side, and then kind of brought some all around it, just to incorporate more into that district. The thing that we go through when we start developing this district is we have to go by parcel properties, and so, or parcel lines. And so as you start to draw a line, it's hard to really determine where the cutoff should be, because you have to be cognizant of the property, because if you draw a line down the middle of the street, if you will, one side of the street would be eligible for the utilization of TIF funds, and the other side of the street might not be eligible, depending on where that district is established. So what we try to do is, you'll notice on this map, there's some alleys that are incorporated in there, just to try to offset those, those lines going, dividing the streets, if you will. And so this is the proposed district that is currently in the plan for you all to consider.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to add, that expansion was not Pioneer's idea. That was engagement with the stakeholders, the people we talked to, the community, Trevor, including Trevor. Sorry if I'm setting him up for something. But because they saw opportunity for redevelopment and investment that could benefit that portion of the community as well. It has need there, so why not expand the boundary to incorporate those areas? So that's, that's why it bounded it up where it is. Potential redevelopment.
The next slide is the current zoning within the district. Everything is, you know, commercially zoned. You have a yellow portion, and then you have that blue portion. Really just wanted to show how the current zoning of this is established. I know there's been some questions on, you know, there is residential properties within this area. You know, it's, that is correct, but it is still zoned in that commercial area. And again, property owners that are in this district that have residential areas, they can participate in the sense of applying for funds, or they don't have to, just because they're in the district. You know, if they decide not to do anything, you know, to maybe improve their district or their property, they don't have to. They don't have to do anything just because it's within that district. But it, right now, it is all zoned in that commercial area. Next, I'm going to move into governance. You might be asking how this all comes together. After it's all adopted and it's in place, the city council will go through and appoint an urban renewal agency. Sometimes, you know, it's however you want, whatever you want to call it, as long as it's kind of that oversight board, if you will. It's appointed by the city council. And the one role, or the one thing that I want to stress is that Bear Paw Development has no role in the agency, meaning that once this, this plan, if it's adopted, Bear Paw does not have a seat at the table unless it's you guys that appoint one of their members to the board. They actually, they don't get to just have a seat on the board. They actually, they don't get to just have a seat on the board, just because they're BearPod and they maybe started this process. That urban renewal agency is statutorily defined membership. For those of you that followed the recent legislature changes, they did define who has to be on that board, or before it was just kind of whoever you wanted it to be, but they did change it that it can't be fewer than five members, and it must include one representative from the county and one representative from the school district. So city council, when you go through and you appoint this, if you move forward with this, that would be some of the caveats, that you would have to make sure that you have the proper people seated on that board. And then acts as the advisory board to the council. I know I've heard it, that people feel that the urban renewal agency is the end-all, that if they, if somebody comes to them and asks for funding, and they approve it, that they are the ones that get to approve it in its entirety, and that's not correct. If that group goes to the urban renewal agency, they come up with a recommendation, that recommendation gets forwarded to you all to make sure that it's fitting with your plan and it's fitting within your municipality. So it's kind of that checks and balances, if you will. I see it all the time. I'm the, one of the council representatives on the TED district commute. Sometimes, we, as a, as a board, think this is the best avenue. We bring it to the full council for approval, and they've shut it down because they, they didn't like the plan or whatever, so then we had to go back to the drawing board to try to figure out what was the best, best method. Management of the urban renewal district, the, the next step. Just because the, the district gets created, doesn't mean that it's hands-off.
One more slide.
Oh, yeah, one more slide. Doesn't mean it's hands-off for everybody. There still is a lot of work that goes into these, just to manage them. Usually in January, in February, you want to go through and identify projects that you want undertaken. You would develop the plan that says, hey, you know, we think we should focus on sidewalk repair, and so as you're, as you're talking to projects, you might focus on those ones for one year, and then you'll change this every, every single year. You'll estimate the TIF dollars available for the next fiscal year, so you'll know how much you're able to award out. You'll prepare a work plan and budget for the upcoming year. You'll adopt the work plan. You still have some annual reporting that you have to do, and then you have feedback, feedback and evaluation of, hey, how did last year go? What did we make a mistake on? What did we do good on? And then as you go into the next cycle, you can make those, those tweaks on what you'd like to focus a little different on. There is an annual report that is due by September thirtieth. So just because the district is created, I don't want you all to think that it is what it is, and there's nothing more you have to do. There's still things that you guys are a part of to keep this thing rolling. Next slide, Trevor, stakeholders. I just went through and identified some of the stakeholders that I felt, you know, government, Haver City Council, Haver City County Planning Board, Montana Department of Revenue, and then you have your taxing jurisdictions, public schools, fire departments, any fire districts, Hill County, and of course, landowners. You know, the best right in, in Montana is owning your property, and we want to make sure that people understand that even if this property is in the district, you still have complete say on, on what is going to happen with it. So that is why I have a stakeholder in there. Next slide. Some concerns that were brought up at the hearing on October sixth. I apologize that I wasn't here in person, but I did have contacts with, with BearPod to kind of let us know what was going on. I know eminent domain, which is MCA seven fifteen forty-two fifty-nine, came into play, and people were concerned of it, rightfully so. I mean, nobody wants to use that eminent domain term. In the resolution contributing to blight, we do have one of the sections in it that says, "The city shall not use its powers of eminent domain to acquire private property for any private use in the implementation of any urban renewal project within the area as shown in the statement of blight." Now, keep in mind, this isn't an avenue that allows the city to start using eminent domain. Eminent domain is always there for a city to exercise it, regardless if it's a URD or a TED. And, and so I just want to make sure that in that resolution, that is in there. That's still at your discretion to decide if that would be something that you would go through and utilize. But URD does not enable that any more than it is without it, and that's the biggest thing I want to stress with that. And then you have residential property owners will be forced to make improvements of the property. Besides public right-of-way projects, property owners would not have to do a thing, but they could apply for funds to assist on a project on property if they choose to do so. Why, why do I say besides public? Excuse me, why would I say public right-of-way projects if the city decides to go in and correct public right-of-way issues with maybe curbs and gutters or sidewalks? They might be a benefactor of that, but you know, as far as actually going on and saying you have to paint your house purple, you know, or you have to put this certain fence in, that is not something that this allows to do any more than without having it. So that would be, again, up to the property owner to decide to want to participate and ask for funding to get this project.
So this would be the districts only that are on the map?
Yes. Yep. Yep. And with that, the next slide is, is just any questions that you might all have. I'm unaware of your process, so ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time. I'm sure there's going to be some questions. Please let us know if we can, if we can help. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to your, with the, the kind of the timeline of the projects? You said typically January, February is when you kind of line out projects for the year. If you have a project that spans into the next fiscal year, say it's a project that doesn't get completed, or is, is a multi-year project, is that okay? Is it, does it have to begin and end within that fiscal year?
No. So you're able to carry the funds over because they're dedicated to that project, and so you'd be able to account for them going forward from year to year. I look back at Brad just to make sure, he's, he's the finance guy on this, but, but I've seen it where some of these projects take multiple years to, to get to completion. And so as long as the funds are allocated, you, and you can't rob Peter to pay Paul kind of a thing. If you allocate, you know, ten thousand dollars, that's theirs until that project is completed, or you take the funding back, which I've seen happen before, because people's plans change.
I'm sure there's some big questions, John, so hang with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Does BearPod or Pioneer have anything further additionally? Okay, we'll open up the floor for questions and comments.
Let me get a burn her. One of the concerns that I've heard when I'm on the community is, will this take away from the school funding? So when you say the mill raise not included in increment, does that include any funding for the schools, or is that increase taken away and put into the TIF also?
I'll let the experts answer it, because I probably will get it wrong.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Trevor, would you mind going back to that slide with the little graph?
Yes.
I could try to describe it, but as Julie learned today, it's difficult to describe it without, without graphics.
Sorry, that one?
That one, yes. Thank you very much. So, once the district is established, the, the tax that the school districts, that the fire districts, that the county, that the city will receive for general purposes is set, is established. So as the taxable value goes up, if we're successful with this program, and we grow valid property values and grow the overall tax base over the life of the district, the amount that the schools receive and those other taxing entities does not go up during the life of the district. They receive just the base. So you're not taking anything away from the schools, it's just not growing the tax, they're not increasing the amount of tax revenue they are receiving as it goes up. The, the concept behind all of this, as you can see on this chart, we're showing the total taxable value and the total, the total tax base growing. And would it grow but for the investment we are making in the community to, to grow that tax base? Without that investment, you may not grow that tax base. That's what the whole concept of tax increment financing is about. So they are not taking anything away during the life of it, but they are not gaining that increment. Some would argue, including myself, that that increment would not be growing as much without that investment that you're making in, in the district. Now, that does not apply to any newly voted mills. So if there is a school mill levy that passes after the district is established, those mills are not part of the increment. They go back to the school district. So anything related to that? Any, is that adequate?
Let me ask, Bonita, did that answer your question?
That's what I was wondering, if there were new mills, if they went back to the school.
Yes. Is there further questions, comments?
Good evening, I'm Mike Turner, thirteen eleven, Second Street. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I'd just like to address the council as a, as a normal citizen of Haver. We've heard a lot of high-level comments here about TIFs and URDs, et cetera, et cetera. But this comes from a homeowner who's going to be affected by this URD. So I think it's important that you people, who you represent, that people on the ground, the normal people, the little people like me, I would like you, if you could take into these comments and just listen to them, please. As regards eminent domain, it's true what he says, it can't be used for, for private use, but it can be used for public use. There's no third-party pass-through, but you can still take my house if you want to put a school there, or you want to put a park there. Eminent domain still exists. So although my house is in that, is in that district, you still get eminent domain over. Also, one of the perceptions of URDs is gentrification. We perceive higher property taxes, and let's face it, that's what's going to happen, because that's the way your, your TIF's going to be funded. You're going to have to increase property values to get increased property taxes. High recessed values are going to need, are going to necessity lead to a higher tax bill, which I'm going to have to pay. Homeowners will eventually maybe be unable to meet these tax increases. This has happened in other places with the VURDs, and with some examples, if it go along of the, of the mountain there. Fixed homeowners, home, home, sorry, I'll say again. Fixed income homeowners are particularly at risk, of which I'm one. Long-time city residents and homeowners could eventually be forced out of their homes by gentrification. I'm not saying it, it will happen, but it could, and it's a concern. Also, if you go into this URD, you have the authority to enter private property under MCA seven fifteen four five seven two. This is going to lead to more assessments, some property, property tax increases, which will obviously drive into funding for your TIF. Also, negative public opinion on the URDs can make potential purposes of my property, should I wish to sell it, because it's inside the URD. Homeowners will be obligated to disclose these facts to potential buyers, that it is within the URD, which could lead to difficulty selling the home. Additionally, some lenders will not finance homes that are within URDs, they won't take on the additional risk. So buyers would most likely not want to purchase my property due to eminent domain, the additional authority to enter a private property, and perceived higher tax values. I still haven't received an answer to my question at the last meeting as to rationalization or justification for inclusion within the URD. You stated, sir, one side of the street could be in the URD and the other is not. That's exactly what's happened. On one side of the street is our house, on the other side of the street, so the other houses, they're not in the URD. You can have a URD in the TIF if you'd like, I'm not against it in, in principle, but I don't want to be within it. It puts too much pressure on my home, it puts too much pressure on me for future taxes. I think the boundary proposal could and should be changed. I was told at the last meeting that that's not possible. It's aligned on a map located by GeoLox, so what you've got to do is change it. That concludes my presentation, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for listening.